April Common Council Meeting to Order. All alderpersons are present. Thank you all for being here and welcome to those joining us here or watching from home. Item three on our agenda this evening is a presentation of the colors by the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Honor Guard, followed by a silent prayer, sorry, by the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer. I invite you to please stand.
[inaudible] Yes, we will rebuild the Cathedral of Notre Dame and make it even better than before. Correspondent Vicki Barker has more to say.
Fifty investigators have been assigned to the case trying to determine just how nine centuries of French history burned. It appears terrorism or any other deliberate act is being ruled out, but police are interviewing some of the workers involved in ongoing renovations to aspire to last well. The fire broke out. An accident? Negligence? That will be for the investigators to determine. Thank you, CBS News.
Officials say nearly $700 million is already in the pledge to the rebuilding effort, and the French could get a helping hand from a video game. Dava was a centerpiece in the 2014 game Assassin's Creed Unity, and an artist for the game's designers spent years cataloging it, structured in intricate detail. White House damage control already gearing up for the release of a redacted movie, CBS's Bullwinkle.
The United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under governed indivisible, with liberty, justice, and...
...a more subdued approach. They have arranged a reading room. They'll go through this very quickly, hopefully issue a speech. So two different teams of attorneys with two very different sets of approaches.
...due out Thursday. House Democrats are demanding documents from the administration in yet another investigation. Correspondent Bill Reinkopf reports earlier this month, reporting President Trump is saying he'd be willing to pardon Acting Homeland Security Secretary Kevin McAlley if he went to jail for denying the entry of migrants into the United States. Now, a letter by the chairs of the House Judiciary Committee and two subcommittees is demanding that McAlley didn't provide any documentation surrounding the story. It also asks him to be available along with other Homeland Security personnel for testimony on Capitol Hill if necessary. Bill Reinkopf, CBS News, Washington. On Wall Street, Dow Jones and Wall Street gained 67 points, $26,452, the Nasdaq up 24, to finish above 8,000 for the first time in six months. Now that Dell's small business technology advisors offer advice, one-on-one partnership in tailored tech solutions like computers with Intel Core processors. Call an advisor today at 877-BY-DEL. No word in English language is less convincing than probably.
Are you sure we should get matching tattoos on our first date?
Sure. We'll put them on my feet together.
Probably.
It's been 23 minutes since I ate.
I can probably...
You should wait 30 minutes.
Okay. Tell me what's going on.
Thank you. Item five on our agenda this evening is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so only on items appearing on our agenda this evening, which council members may yield their time and invite you to the podium. And we always ask individuals to introduce themselves by stating their name and their address for the record. Item number six is the oath of office for City Clerk Jennifer M. Gosick. Madam Clerk.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Jennifer M. Gosick.
Aye, Jennifer M. Gosick.
Having been duly elected...
Having been duly elected...
To the Office of City Clerk...
To the Office of City Clerk...
In and for the City of Wisconsin Rapids...
In and for the City of Wisconsin Rapids...
Wood County, Wisconsin...
Wood County, Wisconsin...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And of the State of Wisconsin...
And of the State of Wisconsin...
And will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge...
The duties of said office...
The duties of said office...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Item seven on our agenda is the oaths of office for alderpersons in Districts One, Three, Five, and Seven. If they could please come forward.
Please raise your right hands and repeat after me. Aye. State your names.
Aye, Joseph Zerflue.
Having been duly elected...
Having been duly elected...
To serve as... State your district.
To serve as District One Alderperson.
Alderperson. For the City of Wisconsin Rapids...
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And of the State of Wisconsin...
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge...
The duties of said office...
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you to those five individuals and congratulations. Thank them for running for office and congratulate them on their election. Item eight on our agenda this evening is an oath of office and badge pinning for new police officer Brett L. Gerlock. Brett, if you could come forward, please.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brett L. Gerlock...
I, Brett L. Gerlock.
Having been duly selected...
Have been duly selected.
To serve as an officer...
To serve as an officer.
Of the Police Department...
Of the Police Department.
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids...
For the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do hereby solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin...
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office...
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to call forward Brett's father, Lane, to pin his badge for him.
Thank you, Brett, for willing to serve our fine city, and we wish you the best. Stay safe out there. Item number nine on our agenda this evening is an election of a common council president. And with this item, I will open the floor for nominations. Is there a motion or nomination?
Your Honor.
Alderperson Zerflue?
I would like to nominate Alderperson Coth.
You have a nomination for Alderperson Coth. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Have there any other... Alderperson Blazer?
I'd like to nominate Alderperson Kubaschak.
Do you accept Alderperson Kubaschak?
Sure.
Any additional nominations? Seeing no further nominations, we'll close nominations, and we're going to do an election. We're going to... Because you can't do a secret ballot, right? But they can do... They can do a secret ballot. Thank you. Okay. Write your...
Write who you want to vote for. You don't have to put your district number on it.
Yeah. You don't need to identify your district. Do not. Do not need to identify your district. And clerk will collect those or pass them along, I guess. Whichever the preference. Sorry? Oh, I can. Congratulations. Thank you. We'll move on to item number 10 on our agenda this evening, which is the election of an alderperson to the Planning Commission. I'd open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Mr. Zerflue.
Mr. Zerflue, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Is there additional... Did I see two over there? Any additional nominations to the Planning Commission? Seeing no further nominations, we'll close the floor to nominations, and I'd ask for a casting of unanimous consent. Is there any objection?
I'll make a motion for unanimous consent.
Motion to cast unanimous consent. Is there any objection? Is it... I call for a second or do I... No. Unanimous ballot. No. Okay. We're going to go for unanimous... Okay. We'll accept the motion to confirm Alderperson Zerflue to the Planning Commission. Is there a second? Second by Blazer.
Motion carried. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item 11 is the election of an alderperson to the Park and Recreation Commission. I'd open the floor for nominations.
Your Honor, I'll nominate Alderperson Coth.
You have a nomination for Alderperson Coth. Any additional nominations to the Park and Rec Commission? We'll close the floor to nominations. I should ask if you accept. Do you accept?
Yes, I accept.
I entertain a request for unanimous... Alderperson Blazer? We have a request for unanimous consent. Any objection? There are no objections? We'll... Then we're good to go. Sorry. Get some confusion on that one. Okay. Thank you for that. We'll move on to item 12, election of a non-voting alderperson members to the Water Works and Lighting Commission. Are there any nominations? Did I hear that right? Alderperson Blazer?
I'm just going to say, we struggle with this every year, and I know by ordinance that we need... We have two non-voting members, and usually we have people here, you know, some water and light. If we need an update, I'm not planning to nominate anyone, but I really think our legislative committee needs to look at this position, whether or not we can do it. I've always been in favor of making one of the commissioners an actual... An alderperson, a voting member on the committee, instead of just...
Oh, I didn't even catch that. Sorry. Are there any additional... Are there any nominations to the Water Works and Lighting Commission? We have a nomination for Scott Kellogg. Is there... Do you accept? Is there any additional nominations? We've got two spots. Alderperson Blazer? Meetings are Wednesday afternoons at 1:30, 1 o'clock. Alderperson Graff?
I'll nominate Mr. Raume.
Do you accept? All right. I'd entertain a motion to cast unanimous consent. A motion by Kubaschak. Is there any objection? Seeing none, thank you both for willing to continue to serve. I believe you're both on there now. And perhaps a referral to the Legislative Committee at some point to discuss that. Maybe we could tighten it up exactly what we'd like to discuss, but thank you. Item 13, my appointments to standing committees of the Common Council. For the Committee of Public Works, Raume, Kubaschak, and Graff. Human Resources, Kellogg, Zerflue, and Blazer. And Finance and Property, Coth, Catna, and Blazer. Everybody get those? Public Works, we have Raume, Kubaschak, Graff. Human Resources, we've got Kellogg, Zerflue, and Blazer. And Finance, we've got Coth, Catna, and Blazer. All right. Now, those committees, the newly appointed... 14, the newly appointed committees will meet to elect the chairpersons and secretaries and file reports with the city clerk. Would you like to caucus in your committees and elect your chairpersons?
[inaudible]
Secretary?
[inaudible]
Secretary?
[inaudible]
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 Secretary for Finance is...
Do I... I probably would read that too then, right? But they have to figure out who they're... They figure that out later. Did you get the Public Works?
Yep. They're all on there. Public Works is Kubaschak's...
Secretary's Graff?
Yep.
Who would be the... Did the chairs of... Chairs elect their Chair of Legislative, right?
Yeah. They'll pick that up at the first... Well, I guess... I guess they... [inaudible]
The chairs of the three committees should select their Chair of Legislative as well if they can... Legislative and Secretary.
[inaudible]
That's fine. We should select the chairs of the Legislative Committee right away, too. The ordinance doesn't really specify, but if you... So Blazer... I'll read, I guess, the... Blazer, Coth, and Kubaschak should select the Chair of Legislative.
[inaudible]
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 And then Secretary? Somebody want to be a Secretary? Or don't we? Okay. So I will read Blazer. So the Public Works Committee again is Raume, Kubaschak, and Graff, with the Chair being Kubaschak, Secretary being Graff. Finance and Property being Coth, Catna, and Blazer, with the Chair being Coth, and Secretary being Catna. And HR being Kellogg, Zerflue, Blazer, with the Chair being Blazer, and the Secretary being Kellogg. And then the Legislative Committee, consisting of the three chairs of the committees, Blazer, Coth, and Kubaschak, Chair being Blazer, Secretary being Coth of that committee. So thank you for pulling that together for us. Move on to item number 15, which is my report. Good evening, councilmember, staff, and those here or watching from home. On the Metalko item, the city has completed its due diligence related to the review at the Planning Commission, which was... And the council level, which was taken up last month. They are now working through their air permitting and other DNR permitting stages. You can actually follow the progress with their permit on the DNR's website. Item on the Mayor's Youth Council, they continue to work energetically on their 2019 projects, both Bicycle Benefits Program and a Teen and a Community Moving Night. They are meeting twice a month, and they're striving to get both projects launched shortly after school gets out. The month of June will be a big month for them, as they are also getting a start on planning their Fourth Annual Kids de Park Day. So that's a free event that is aimed at getting youth and kids in our parks, which will take place the Saturday of Blossom Fest between 1:00 and 3:00 p.m. They're also working with Public Works and I on putting together a small tree planting event in conjunction with Arbor Day next Friday, where Joe and I will be at Washington School speaking to Mrs. Jennings' class over there on Arbor Day. The Beautification Council's launched their annual tree sale with a significant amount of trees affected by EAB. It's their goal of the group to promote tree plantings in a more robust urban forest. You can purchase flowering trees for people's own planting, or donate money, or make a donation to the tree program, and the city will plant a tree for you. For more information, visit the city's website and click on the Tree Sale button, which is on the homepage. In an update on the parks area, the sculpture and public art continues to move along. There were a number of sites selected within parks and public places for sculpture, and that were approved by the commission earlier this month. Zoo improvements also continue to be made with the petting zoo and things that were wrapped up or completed last fall, and then those things will be finished before the zoo opens in May. The airport held a successful drone seminar this past weekend with drone enthusiasts and a few realtors and other folks in attendance. The construction season at the airport will begin here in the coming weeks, as they finish the ramp and apron area, as well as the connecting taxiway that was started last fall. The full-length parallel taxiway to the long runway will be done this year, and construction kickoff meetings are actually taking place on Thursday. The library, as was mentioned at the last council meeting, was recently named a finalist for the National Medal for Museum and Library Services. This is the nation's highest honor for institutions that make significant innovative and exceptional contributions in our community. So we want to congratulate them. And also note that the plans for the second-floor Adult Services area are nearly finalized. At a public meeting they held last week, they released the near-final versions, and that final report will be released to the public on May 1st. East Grand Avenue, as we're all aware, had a slight delay in its construction and was delayed about a week, and started yesterday with stage one pavement removals and the beginning of some installation... The installation of erosion control, and then followed by nearly... Very near to start would be the sanitary sewer... Sanitary sewer replacements. Earth Day festivities will be held next Monday and Tuesday at UWSP. I will be participating alongside some other elected officials and mayors, talking about various sustainability initiatives being held or underway in our cities. And in the category of attended, hosted, or participated in, we held a very well-attended coffee with the mayor last week at the Lowell Center, where we talked about a number of projects throughout the city. And then to put people on notice, coming up on April 24th, next Wednesday, at the Chamber of Commerce, from 7:30, I believe, till 9:30, as well as one on May 7th at Perkins. Attended the United Way Volunteer Breakfast, where I read a proclamation declaring Volunteer Week in Wisconsin Rapids last week. Hosted last Friday, a group of St. Luke's preschoolers, who are always very full of ideas and energy, in this room, where they also toured the Police Department, thanked the Police Department for helping co-host that visit. And attended the House School Carnival last Friday night. So if any takers want to... Maybe the alderman that represents the House School area would like to be... Get pie in the face for two hours with me next year. We'll take volunteers for that. FACT Meeting, hosted a group... Attended a meeting at Lincoln High School, where high school students that are involved with FACT, which is about tobacco issues around the various concerns... Public health concerns associated with vaping. So they were getting me up to speed as to youth issues as they see it, especially as it relates to public safety in our high school and our middle school. That's quite incredible. And then recognize AmeriCorps staff that are serving in various organizations, the Health Department, the Boys and Girls Club, as well as Mead School during AmeriCorps Recognition Week. Excuse me. Held two ribbon cuttings last week in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. Motivate Nutrition on 8th Street, which is located across from Witter Field on 8th... Right across from 8th Street there. They are a new kind of health shake food business. And then Awards &amp; More has expanded and relocated after that longstanding business has, I think, moved three times in the last couple of years, but has expanded. Now they're located right on Pepper, Pepper and 12th Street. Talked about the proclamation for United Way Volunteer Week, and next month, I'm going to be submitting a number of board and commission appointments for council consideration. If individuals from the public wish to serve as a citizen representative on the number of boards and commissions, please contact the clerk's office or me, and be happy to talk with folks about that. On the pool project, we're currently soliciting construction bids with a deadline of April 25th, next Thursday. At the end of tonight's meeting, I'd like to coordinate the council's availability for... To set the next meeting on that topic. And since our meeting, an additional $500,000 has been pledged to the project. This gift is a matching opportunity for wish... Especially if anyone is wishing to make a donation to the project and have it matched. Just in general updates on the YMCA Boys and Girls Club project, as folks that drive by or coming here tonight saw, the YMCA shell is beginning to take shape, with much of the initial exterior work also being completed on the Boys and Girls Club portion. Last week was National Boys and Girls Club Week in the country, and I recently concluded my tenure after three terms and nine years on the Board of Directors at the Boys and Girls Club. And having done that for that period of time, I beg s repeating that that organization really does provide such a critical youth... Critical role to youth development, providing structured before and after-school program... Programming to our community members. It'll be very nice to have them downtown across the street come next spring. And that concludes my report. If anyone wishes to engage or call in, I've got my radio show tomorrow morning, 10 a.m., WFHR. And move on to item number 16 on our agenda this evening, which is a reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
The motion by Coth to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Zerflue. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 17 is a reading of the minutes of the Municipal Board of Canvassers. Jennifer?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
The motion to approve by Zerflue, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Coth. Yeah. And I'll have the clerk summarize the certification, too, just for the record.
The Municipal Board of Canvassers met at 11:15 a.m. on Friday, April 5th, 2019, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Members Ramona Lubek, Kay Furkey, and Kathy Davis were present. Also present were Jennifer Gosick and Sue Bravick. The board certified the results of total votes cast for the five municipal races as follows. For the Office of District One Alderperson, Joseph M. Zerflue received 171 votes. Keith L. Hetzel received 147 votes. For the Office of District Three Alderperson, Scott Kellogg received 316 votes. For the Office of District Five Alderperson... For the Office of District Five Alderperson, Stephen Coth received 213 votes. For the Office of District Seven Alderperson, Thad Kubaschak received 332 votes. And for the Office of City Clerk, Jennifer Nepper-Gosick, received 2,324 votes. The meeting adjourned at 12:35 p.m.
Thank you. We've got a motion, a second to approve. Any further discussions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderperson Kubaschak. Oh. Check it where you're at in the system. It says reading of the minutes, so. Okay. Oh, okay. All right, we're good. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight I's, zero N's.
Thank you. Move on to item number 18, new business. Item A is consideration of a resolution setting ambulance rates. Attachment number three. All the persons what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to accept.
Motion by Coth, is there a second? Second by Katna, any discussion? Any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight I's, zero N's.
Item 18B, consideration of a resolution authorizing the submittal of an award application for a Department of Natural Resources Wisconsin Assessment Money Contractor Services Award for 339th Avenue South. Attachment number four. All the persons what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Coth, is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight I's, zero N's.
Thank you. Item number 19 is consideration for adoption of the actions of the Planning Commission at its meeting on April 1st. Planning Commission met at 4:00 p.m. on April 1st, 2019, in the first-floor Conference Room here at City Hall. Members present included myself, Tom Bry, Shane Burkhart, Daniel Hanson, Sue Wesley, Lee Tao, and Alderperson Kubaschak. Others present are on file in the Clerk's Office. The meeting was called order at 4:00 p.m. Item one is approval of the report from the March 4th Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion by Bry, second by Hanson, to approve the report, and that motion carried unanimously. Item two was maps and plaits. There were no maps or plaits received. Item three is consider the discontinuance of a portion of East Commerce Drive. There was a motion and a second to approve a resolution to initiate the discontinuance of a portion of Rapids East Commerce Drive pursuant to 66.1003 Wisconsin statutes, and that motion carried unanimously. Item four, Plan 190096, Metalko Incorporated. The applicant is requesting site architectural and plan of operation review for a proposed industrial remelt, aluminum remelt facility. The subject property is located at 4,800 East Commerce Drive. There was a motion and a second to approve with the following condition, with the six conditions that are listed in the minutes. Motion carried unanimously. Item five was Plan 190105, Metalko Incorporated. The applicant is requesting a special exemption to allow an increase in building height within the M1 General Commercial, General Industrial District. Subject property is located at 4,800 East Commerce Drive. Represented from OBG, provided an overview of the need for the increase in the building height. There was a motion and a second to approve and allow a special exemption to allow an increase in building height within the M1 General Industrial District to a height of up to 55 feet, and that motion carried unanimously. There was a motion and a second to adjourn, and the motion carried unanimously with the meeting adjourning at 4:40 p.m. All the persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Coth, is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Any discussion? Seeing no requests to speak, the motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight I's, zero N's.
Item 20 is a consideration for adoption, the action of the standing committees of the Council, as follows. Item A is a Finance and Property Committee meeting held on April 2nd. Alderperson Zerflu?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, April 2nd, in the first-floor Conference Room at City Hall. All committee members were present, with Alderperson Graff sitting in for Alderperson Blazer until he arrived at the meeting. Others in attendance are on file in the Clerk's Office. Item number two, review and consider for approval and extension of an emergency services agreement with the Town of Saratoga. There was a motion and a second to approve the extension of the emergency services agreement with the township of Saratoga. That motion carried unanimously. Item number three, review and consider for approval and extension of an emergency services agreement with the Village of Port Edwards. There was a motion and a second to approve the extension of the emergency services agreement with the Village of Port Edwards. That motion carried unanimously. Item number four, review and discuss current emergency service ambulance rates and consider an increase to the 2019 rates. There was a motion and a second to approve the proposed residential ambulance rates with a non-resident surcharge of $150. That motion carried unanimously. Item number five, consider for approval and application for a $30,000 Disney grant to facilitate Phase One of the zoo project. There was a motion and a second to approve applying for the grant. That motion carried unanimously. Item number six, request permission for the City of Wisconsin Rapids to apply for Wisconsin Assessment Monies to support Northern Steel Casting's environmental investigation on their property located at 338th Avenue South. There was a motion and a second to approve applying for the Wisconsin Assessment Monies grant. That motion carried unanimously. Item number seven, consider for approval Resolution Number Nine, amending the 2019 budget. There was a motion and a second to approve the resolution. That motion carried unanimously. Item number eight, review and consider for approval a state municipal agreement for a statelet, small, STP urban project for West Jackson Street from West Riverview Expressway to Jackson Street Bridge. There was a motion and a second to approve the state municipal agreement for a statelet, small, STP urban project for West Jackson from the expressway to the Jackson Street Bridge. That motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, review and consider for approval the quotes to purchase the furnishings for the East River Bank Project Phase One. There was a motion and a second to approve purchasing furnishings for the East River Bank Phase One not to exceed $79,379. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 10, consider for approval a Class B liquor license application and a Class B beer license application for Hokkaido Chia Lai Huang, sole proprietor for the premises located at 3310 8th Street South. There was a motion and a second to approve the Class B liquor license and Class B beer license. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 11, audit of the bills. There was a motion and a second to approve check number 76056 through 76450, and manual checks 66033 to 66050. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 12, beverage operators licenses. There was a motion and a second to approve the beverage operators licenses that were recommended for approval and are on file in the Clerk's Office. That motion carried unanimously. There was a motion and a second to deny the beverage operators license recommended for denial. That motion carried unanimously. Item number 13, set next meeting date. The next meeting date of the Finance Property Committee will be Tuesday, April 16th, at 5:30 p.m. Item number four is adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. The motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 6:15 p.m. And I will make a motion to approve the report, just with the correction that we met at 5:15 p.m. on April 16th.
Alderperson Katna, you're first. Actually, you got a motion to approve by Zerflu, and a second by Blazer, now Katna.
I'd like to hold out item 10.
Item 10 is liquor license, okay. Is there any objection to holding out item number 10? All right. That'll leave the balance of the report. Are there any requests to speak? All right, motion is to approve with the exception of item number 10.
Motion carried, seven I's, zero N's, one abstention.
Thank you. That leaves item number 10 from that report, which reads, consider for approval a Class B liquor license application and a Class B beer license application for Hokkaido, a sole proprietor for the premises located at 3310 8th Street South.
Just to start discussion, Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Zerflu, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Coth. Request to speak. Alderperson Katna, you're first.
Ms. Gosick, how many liquor licenses are left for the City of Wisconsin Rapids?
If this one is granted, there will be one left. There are two currently.
Okay. So, my concern is that this business is, has not opened its doors yet. I would like to give the applicant a chance to come up here and speak, tell us a little bit about their business, when a projected opening date would be, if they wish.
At this point, I'd like to invite the applicant forward to speak about their proposed enterprise at Hokkaido. If you could come to the podium, please. And then the microphone, make sure the microphone is on. There's a button that says push at the base. Make sure the microphone is on, sir, at the base of the microphone. There's a button that says push. Tim will give you a hand. Thank you.
Okay. Today, the owner is not here. I'm his brother, because he cannot speak English. My English is not good either. So, we, well, I'm just turned 69. This happened is, my brother bought this building, and he spent all money, because we're going inside, oh my God, everything is old, the pipe is bust, leaking. So, we changed it all new pipe, and electric, and heating, and the air conditioning, we need to change it, too. So, we spent $22,000, needed to change the whole unit. So, we applied, if we don't have the licensed, liquor license, it's hard to do. And, well, we can do best, I know. We will be do the sushi. My brother will be do sushi, make sushi. Usually, I'm retired already. I'm morning, just cook breakfast for my whole family. Then lunch, I took the ADRC warranty to the dishwasher. Now, I involve, do this, my brother, do this business, so. I don't know what I say, just, my life is very, very plain. Now, it all changed my life now. This is why I say, I wish I can get a liquor license. That's all.
And the question was, when is the anticipated opening?
Possible is May, but a lot of things need to do. So, I think June we will be open.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And for the record, can we get your name?
Yeah.
So, we can get on the minutes.
Hokkaido, the restaurant called Hokkaido.
The restaurant is. And your name?
My name's Cha Li Huang, but my nickname is Tony, easy. I worked at China Palace almost 30 years.
Yeah.
Manager there.
And this is a, this is a new restaurant, right?
Right, right, right.
Yeah, this is a-
It's 3310.
Separate from the China Palace.
Yeah, different building, yes, yes.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm familiar with the building. Just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, you weren't, okay. And are you the agent on the application? Uh...
I thought the name was the same.
Agent, I don't know who is the agent.
Are you the, are you the agent for the liquor license?
Yes.
Yes, I thought so, okay. All right. So, your brother is the owner?
Yes, mhm.
And you're the agent that applied for the liquor license?
Now, it's, suppose it's my brother, but now I involve in there. I put a lot of money in there, too.
Okay, okay.
So, your, so your brother is going to own the business?
Right.
And your brother is the one that asked for the license?
Yes.
Okay.
I will be helping-
Okay.
-a lot, yeah.
But is your brother, but who is Chia Lai-
Cha Lai Huang is my brother.
Okay.
The young brother, okay.
So, he's, so he listed himself as the, as, he's his own agent, though, for the liquor, for this liquor license?
Right, right, right.
Right, okay. All right. Just wanted to clear that up.
Okay. And can you spell your first name?
Cha, C-H-I-A-L-I-U.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Alderperson Katna, does that take care of your, if we could have you stay up there, Tony, please? We'll go to the rest of the questions, I think.
Okay.
Folks may have some more questions.
Yeah, that answers my questions for now.
Alderperson Blazer, you're first.
He answered my question already, thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Kubaschak?
Tony, thank you for speaking. Your English is actually very good. But my question that I've got is more of a procedural question, and I think that it kind of pertains to what Alderperson Katna might be searching for. Can we make a motion that this liquor license would be conditional upon the opening of the store? Therefore, if it was granted now, with the way that liquor licenses are, is that if we, it's easier to deny a liquor license than it is to deny a renewal. And if a liquor license is granted, there is the state, Supreme Court rulings have kind of looked at that there is a stronger ownership for liquor licenses. So, I think, and maybe I'm wrong, but it's one of those where if we have other people maybe potentially interested in starting a business, and 15 days from now, 30 days from now, want to apply for a Class B combo, because that's what it is, really, a Class B beer is unlimited, but it's a Class B combo liquor that's limited. If it's a case where we can either amend this or make the motion to be conditional upon the opening of the business, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But, yeah, it almost seems like it's kind of ahead of time. We're almost jumping the gun with this, if the start date isn't going to be till June. Because that, if we award that, and then nothing happens, and then a party sits on it, now we can't offer it to somebody else. So, I guess, Michelle, that's what my question is, is that can we procedurally have the liquor license, the Class B combo, as conditional to the opening of the store?
Well, I guess, I think it's, in every other occasion, I don't think that's been the case. I think generally, property owners will come in, and they won't want to put a lot, they're going to put a lot of money in, as he said, into the business, and not knowing whether you're going to have that license or not until you actually open the store. I mean, I think, I think the practice has been that generally, as long as we know that there's a lease, that they're making headway towards the business, we know they're going to have a premises that then, they've been granted. But you're right, you can deny this, you know, and take it up later, I guess, but I'm, I'm hesitant to say that it would be appropriate to make it conditioned until it opens. I know there are, you know, it has to inspection, it'll have, the building will have to be inspected and pass code and everything, so that, that's kind of a built-in contingency. And then also, if, if they don't open after a period of time, then you can move to revoke the license if they don't really have a premises or don't have a business. But, I mean, I'm not going to say you can't do that, but I guess- But, I mean, I'm not going to say you can't do that, but I guess, I, I would find it difficult as a business owner, who generally, they do, they do come and ask for these licenses and want to make sure that they have it, and then continue to work on their business to get it open, but, and you're right, it is a combo license, so the part that is quoted for us is the liquor part of it. We could give him, you know, the beer is unlimited, but because it's the combo with the liquor, then it is, it's limited. There are exceptions for larger restaurants and so on, which this wouldn't apply, I'm assuming you're not going to have over 300 guests in that restaurant, right, it's probably smaller than that. And then, there also are reserve licenses, I think there's one, at least one reserve license, so we, after the granting of this, we would have two licenses still, one regular and one reserve, I believe. I guess it's really up to how you want to do it, I mean, it could be conditioned, but I, I guess I'm hesitant to have you do that in this situation when you've never done that with any other ones, people that have come before you, so...
Real quick, when is the renewal period? It's the end of June, right? So if there is a case where there isn't any movement?
Absolutely.
We could not necessarily revoke, but we could vote to not renew.
Right, and then, as you had stated, it's a little different than, I mean, there more is of a vested property right in a renewal of a license versus the granting or getting an original one, but this license would be from, you know, whatever date they opened until June 30th, and then there, so they probably would need to do their renewal right away, and then that would be considered in the next month or two, so definitely, if they don't have, if they don't open after a period of time, then you probably would proceed to revoke.
Okay, if we got a license, my brother is 65, I'm 69, I will behave, follow the law, follow the law, follow the rule, and do my job.
We'll move on to item number, I mean, Speaker Koth, you're next, did you have something?
I guess I just started with a couple of questions for the city clerk. Jennifer, how much does the liquor license cost to obtain approximately for the one that he wants?
It is $100 for, $100 for the beer, $400 for the liquor, and then a publication fee of $20. Oh, this would be pro rata, yes, I'm sorry, that's for the renewal.
Okay.
I don't have that number on me.
But for 30, it'd be $520 then?
Yes, for one year it would be.
And those liquor licenses are good for one year, correct?
Correct.
All right.
They renew yearly, July 1st.
I don't have any questions for Tony, but what I do have for the other members of council that are going to vote on this is an opinion. When I listen to Tony speak, he is what the American dream is about, he's trying to start a business, and I think like most people at trying to start a business, he realizes that government sometimes moves slow, matter of fact, I think glaciers move faster than government sometimes does. And what he's trying to do is be proactive and get his stuff together before he opens the door on his business. And he's already stated that he's put money into a building that was clearly outdated, that he's trying to fix it up, he's associated with China Palace here in town, which place has been there since I've been a kid, so, again, this kind of goes back to investing in your community and taking a risk, and I'm willing to invest in him till he can start a business and provide a service to the community.
Alderperson Zurflu, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Tony. I'm not prepared to vote down the application just based upon how many we have left. I'm going to vote for it, and I think Alderperson Koth pretty much expressed what I wish to express.
Alderperson Ream, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to say that I did abstain during the first number of questions here, and I'll, the statement I guess I have to make is that...I did go along, I guess, that we're having just the one meeting this month, but that is why in the past I've...to me, this is old business that the old council should have taken care of, in my mind. I don't see any reason, you know, tonight we're doing it, I hope we just keep in mind who's ever here next year at this point in time to reconsider about having a second meeting to close out the old council, and then a new council to take over. I would recommend, no, I can't, is there a motion to pass this, accept it?
We have a one on the floor.
Okay. And because of that, I'll vote no on this, and that's probably how I should have voted on the first number of questions, I did abstain, which basically is a no vote, but it's not that I disagree with it, I just disagree that, that we're handling this at a new council, where the old council was the ones that were doing it and did not finish.
Thank you, Alderperson Ream, or you're, Katnaugh, you're next.
Thank you. So the reason I pulled this item out is because that financing property, no one was present from the applicant to speak to the questions that I asked you originally. With those questions being answered, I feel more comfortable now, moving forward with approving the license, being that you guys are putting a lot of money in to the building and our community, you are looking to open this summer, so thank you for answering those, and I just wanted to clear that up.
Alderperson Blazer?
I'm good, I guess, thank you.
I was just going to offer one point of clarification, that because the liquor portion is quoted within the city with the limitation, that, and I don't, our clerk's office currently doesn't ask if the, if there's a necessity for the liquor portion of the license, so I would assume, but I'll ask it, to be clear, that your intentions are to utilize both the liquor and the beer portions of the license, not just the beer.
Okay.
Is that correct? The intent is to have, to offer liquor in addition to beer?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I'm, yeah, I'm not sure. And I guess the other question, yeah, so maybe that's, if there was an issue with a quota concern of the council, I guess I'm just trying to, trying to clarify that the applicant, you probably, your brother was probably not asked whether or not he wanted to do liquor and beer?
Right.
At the point of application, so if there's a concern about quota or utilizing both aspects of the license, but if the intent is to use both, then, then it's really a moot issue.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? Motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Thank you, thank you.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
All right, thank you, Tony, for being here and representing. All the best to you. I'm a sushi fan, so if I don't have to drive to Stevens Point for good sushi, I for one will be a good customer, so...
I, we wasted two, three months, we took a bank, get along, they don't, they don't help me anything. So we tried many bank, they don't, they don't give me loan.
Sure.
Yeah, so...
Well, best of luck, I know we took, Adam and I took over half a dozen people into that building to try to get somebody to take that project on, so you need all the, all the luck and the world to make this successful, so thank you. Item 20B, Finance and Property Committee meeting held on April 16th.
Thank you again, Your Honor, the Finance and Property Committee met tonight at 5:15 PM in the first floor conference room at City Hall, all committee members were present. Also present was Dennis Pierce, Joe Terry, and Tim DeSorci. Item number two, consider for approval a recommendation from Statewide Services to deny a claim from William Borey for damage to the claimant's vehicle. There was a motion and a second to approve the recommendation to deny the claim, that motion carried unanimously. Item number three, consider for approval permission to allow the Witterfield Warming House to be utilized as a contractor construction field office for the Witterfield Aquatics Facility should a contract be approved. There was a motion and a second to approve the request, that motion carried unanimously. Item number four, review and consider a request from We Energies for a utility easement along Veterans Park and Mead Rapids View Parks. There was a motion and a second to approve the request, that motion carried unanimously. Item number five, review and consider a request from Solaris for a utility easement along Spring Street on city-owned property. There was a motion and a second to approve the request from Solaris for a fee of $1,400, that motion carried unanimously. Item number six, adjournment, there was a motion and a second to adjourn, the motion carried unanimously, the meeting adjourned at 5:25 PM. And I'll make a motion to approve the report.
Motion to approve by Zurflu and a second by Kellogg, are there any requests to speak? Alderperson Kubashak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, can I hold out item number three? I always have a problem with these microphones, I'm sorry, item number three.
Is there any objection to withholding out, or holding out item three? No objection. So that leaves a balance of the report without, with the exception of item three. There's a motion and a second, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
Leaves item number three, Alderperson Kubashak, did you want to speak to holding that item out?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I'm not opposed to this, and I apologize for not coming to the committee meeting, I had a much-needed haircut that I was attending, but it's one of those where construction firms, whether they're a general contractor, whether they're subcontractor, they typically have offices, and it's in the case of like a mobile type of a trailer operation, which isn't bad, but in, with a project like this, there's going to be a lot of contractors, and I'm just kind of worried that the warming house, it, probably the general contractor themselves would take that and not worry about the subcontractors, which is fine, but could this turn into, and, and again, I wasn't at the committee meeting, maybe it was already discussed, but could this turn into an issue because, or are we putting it in the bid documents that the contractor can take it if they want, because this is something that they would pay for, or that they would get a benefit from, you know, so I understand the, I guess the flavor of this, let's utilize it, and then it probably would be a good utilization, and again, I'm not opposed to utilizing it this way, but sometimes, if we don't have a contractor, if we don't have a price in mind, or if we don't have, if we're missing an opportunity to generate a little bit of revenue for the taxpayers on this project, that's, that's what I'm kind of concerned about, thank you.
Thank you. I'd open the floor, the floor is open for nomination, man. Alderperson Zurflu?
I'm sorry, Your Honor?
It is, yeah.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve it.
A motion to approve as presented, is there a second? Second by Koth. Move on to Alderperson Lee Graff, you're first.
I guess I'm just waiting for an answer to Thad's comment, whether it was put into bid documents to save the city money, or if it's just a used, but they're still going to charge us. I'm just waiting for an answer before.
So the thought was that if there was an interest by the contractor to use it, that that would be reflected in their bid, that it would be, you know, kind of an alternative, it wouldn't belong to them, they'd just be using it, the city would still intend to salvage all the materials possible out of that facility, we would do the demo ourselves, it was just potentially an option to try to save in the mob costs for a field office if, if it would be of interest to a contractor bidding on the project. We didn't intend to charge for it, we expected that the various contractors bidding on the project would look at that and make a decision, maybe it's not useful for them, maybe it is, and if they found that it is, lower their bid accordingly, make them a little more competitive. So that was the intent of, of that referral.
And there's probably a likelihood it's going to be in the way, I guess, in all reality.
And that's, that's what I was going to ask, my next question was, is, is this going to get in the way and slow up progress, because we're going to demo that building anyway? Is this going to slow up the construction process based on a 2020 opening?
So, so again, the deadlines for the project, the expected deadlines are in the contract, that building is in the way for some of the finished landscape work, and so a contractor may not be interested because of that, but really, all of the building construction, the pool vessels themselves, everything but the finished landscaping could be accomplished with that building remaining where it is. Once we get into landscaping it, it would have to be removed.
Just as a quick question, is the idea that the removal of that building, is that put into the construction of the pool estimate, or is that maintenance activity that we're going to move aside funds to tear out that building?
So the work that the city had proposed to do, including the laterals, the removal of the track, the removal of the building, was all included in the total budget estimate, and the sheets that have been handed out in the past, there's a, you know, there's a column that lists those activities and those estimates, so it's part of the project and part of what we budgeted to do, we just wanted to do it in-house so that we were not paying out of pocket for those activities.
I'm just going to ask the question because I'm having a hard time, hard time understanding, I just want to make sure, so the $12.5 million for the pool, our staff was going to tear out the, the track and the building, not including the $12.5 million that was a maintenance activity that's going to be done prior to the, or our labor is actually encompassed into the construction of the pool?
Our labor is included in, encompassed in with the construction of the facility, it'll all get charged the same, the same project ID.
Thank you, see no further requests to speak, motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one, zero nays, one abstention.
Item 20C, Public Works Committee meeting held on April 2nd. Alderperson Ream?
I can, I'll read this, Your Honor, I'm not going to make a motion at the end of it of what to do with it, there's a, there's a new, even though the members are the same of the, from the previous council, but there is a different chair, so I will just read the minutes. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, April 2nd, in council chambers at City Hall. Tom Ream, Thaddeus, Kubashak, Lee Graff, Mayor Verwink, Paul Waller, Joe Terry, and Joe Ikestead were present, others attending are listed below. Item one, call the meeting to order, the meeting was called to order at 6:00. 17:00 PM, delayed due to the Finance and Property Committee meeting. Item two, review the DPW report, the motion, there's a motion and a second to forego reviewing the report and accept it as submitted, motion carried 3-0. Item three, review refuse collection ordinance, the refuse ordinance was reviewed, attendees expressed concern about lack of service to some commercial businesses and mobile home parks. Item four, hold an assessment hearing for public improvements along High Street from 7th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North, public hearing called to order at 7:12 PM. City Engineer Ikestead reviewed the assessment report, speaking in favor were none, speaking against were none, public hearing closed at 7:15 PM. Item five, consider final resolution authorizing assessments for the installation of public improvements along High Street from 7th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North. There is a motion and a second to approve a final resolution authorizing assessments for the installation of public improvements along High Street from 7th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North, consistent with the assessment report. Motion carried 3-0. Item six, hold an assessment hearing for public improvements along Van Buren Street from 8th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North, public hearing called to order at 7:17 PM. City Engineer Ikestead reviewed the assessment report, speaking in favor were none, speaking against were none. City Engineer Ikestead reviewed the assessment report. Speaking in favor were none. Speaking against were none. Public hearing closed at 7:19 PM. Item seven, consider final resolution authorizing assessments for the installation of public improvements along Van Buren Street from 8th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North. The motion is second to approve a final resolution authorizing assessments for the installation of public improvements along Van Buren Street from 8th Avenue North to 10th Avenue North, consistent with the assessment report. Motion carried 3-0. Item eight, review and consider proposals for sidewalk maintenance and curb and gutter maintenance in 2019. There's a motion and a second to accept a proposal for sidewalk and curb and gutter maintenance from Jostland Concrete. The motion carried 3-0. Item nine, consider the discontinuance of a portion of East Commerce Drive. The motion, there's a motion and a second to approve the discontinuance of a portion of East Commerce Drive, conditional upon the inclusion of utility easements in the certified survey to protect the city's interest in the sewer and water mains that exist in the current rate of way. The motion carried 3-0. Item 10, review the referral list. The referral list was reviewed. Alderperson Graff referred Chapter 7 solid waste collection, specifically 7.09, preparation of brush-in yard waste. Other special collections to be reviewed. Item 11, adjourn. There's a motion and a second to adjourn. The motion carried 3-0. Meeting adjourned at 7:38 PM. With that, I submit that to the council.
Alderperson, what are your wishes regarding that item? A motion by Kubashak to approve. Is there a second? Second by Blazer. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing none, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
The second, number 20C, the Human Resources Committee meeting held on April 5th, 2019. Alderperson Coth.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee meeting, Human Resources Committee met at 1:00 PM Friday, April 5th, on the first floor, conference room of City Hall. All members were present. Others attending are in file with the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 1:02 PM. Item number two, discussion approval for fire department structure changes. Discussion took place on two phases of restructure for the fire department in order to distribute workload evenly and increase efficiencies. Comparisons to other fire departments in Marshfield and Stevens Point were presented. Phase one includes the addition of another management 40-hour daytime position to split the current combined shift commander deputy position. An entry-level firefighter position would remain vacant. The entry-level position could be readdressed later, dependent on financing and operations. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth and seconded by Alderperson Zurflu as follows. Implementation of Phase one to include the creation of a division chief for emergency medical services and a division chief for fire services, with one of the division chiefs being the deputy chief, one of the division chiefs being the deputy chief. Captain, shift commanders would be renamed to battalion chiefs, and second relief officers would become second lieutenants. An entry-level position would remain vacant. This would allow for the three shifts to run with 11, 11, and 10 persons. The filling of the vacant entry-level position could be addressed later, dependent on financing and operations. Any provision may be subject to labor negotiations and will be negotiated with the IAFF Union. Motion carried. Item number three was consider approval for a limited-term employment for retired detective. Discussion around the rehire of former detective Andy Dewitt due to a cold case that the Attorney General wants to investigate. The rehire is a limited-term temporary employee. Employment would be limited to 250 hours with $8,093 maximum pay. The position is not eligible for benefit. A motion was made by Alderperson Zurflu and seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to approve this position, limited to 250 hours at Mr. Dewitt's last rate of pay. The city may seek reimbursement from the Department of Justice if costs can be recovered from the DOJ and Mr. Dewitt, if any fees are reimbursed to him for wages that the city paid him. Motion carried. Item number four was discussion and approval for changes to the city's current retirement practice for employees to provide advance notice of retirement date. Discussion took place about, discussion took place about the creation of a termination policy to clarify outline notification requirements for retirement and resignations. In addition, the city would allow floating holidays and personal days to be used once notice of retirement has been given. The longevity policy would be amended to reflect the same terms of a 30-day notification requirement. Voluntary resignations would require a two-week note, motion, or two-week notice. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth and seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to, for the HR director to create a termination policy for the committee to review. Motion carried. Item number five was the standing agenda. Item, current city openings. The city currently has the following positions open: bulldozer operator, GIS coordinator, IT manager, seasonal engineering technician, and senior city inspector. Applications for entry-level police officers will be accepted beginning on April 22nd, 2019. And the information will be posted on the city's website on April 22nd, 2019. All the cities can be, all city positions can be found on the city website, www.rapids.org/jobopportunities. Item number six was discussion approval to award a lump sum bonus payment at the amount of .25% of the 2018 base wages to AFSCME local 1075 employees. The employees were limited by state law to a 2.25% CPI wage increase for 2019. Non-union employees received a 2.5% wage increase. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth and seconded by Alderperson Zurflu to pursue, to approve a lump sum bonus payment in the amount of .25% of the 2018 base wages to the AFSCME local 1075 employees. Motion carried. In open session, the committee voted to go into closed session under Section 19.85 Para 1, Para E of the Wisconsin statute, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth and seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to move into closed session. A roll call vote was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. 7A, in closed session, the committee discussed ongoing negotiations, strategies, and parameters regarding the successor labor agreements with the International Association of Firefighters Local 425 and the Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association. Item B, the committee will return to open session. It may take action on the successor labor agreements with the IAFF Local 425 and WRPPA. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth and seconded by Alderperson Zurflu to return to open session. A roll call vote was taken. Motion carried. In open session, the committee may discuss and ratify successor labor agreements with the WRPPA and/or IAFF Local 425. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth and seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to approve the tentative agreement with the WRPPA reached at mediation March 14th. Motion carried. Item number nine was to set the next meeting date. That was deferred to the April 16th common council meeting for new chairperson to set new date with, new date and time for future HR committee meetings. Item number 10 was adjournment. A motion was made by Chairperson Coth, seconded by Alderperson Zurflu to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 2:00 PM. With that, I move for adoption.
Motion for approval by Coth, second by Kellogg. Alderperson Graff, you're first in the speaking order.
I just want to make sure that the document that you sent out reflects number five. The bulldozer operator wasn't added to the agenda. All I want to do is just clarify it for the record.
I'm not tracking what you're, oh, you're saying in the actual agenda was not included. Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Your Honor, I'd also just like to hold out item number seven.
So you want to amend your motion to, I'll take a motion, you want to make a motion to amend your original motion. Is there a second to with, or you want to just? I'll call unanimous consent. Is there any objection to withholding item seven? All right. So that'll leave the balance of the report with the exception of seven. Motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven ayes, excuse me, zero nays, one abstention.
Alderperson Coth, do you want to speak to item seven?
I received a communication today that there was a tentative agreement reached with the WRPPA. And I just wanted to, under this section, make a motion to accept that tentative agreement with the WRPPA.
There's a motion to approve.
I guess on that one, I think that what we would be requesting would be to approve it contingent upon union ratification on or before April 30th of 2019. I think was the recommendation from Don and the bargaining team.
So you want to make that motion, Alderperson Coth?
Yes.
So the motion is to accept the tentative agreement, sorry, I'm going to read your, contingent upon union ratification on or before April 30th, 2019. Is there a second? Second by Zurflu? Move on to Alderperson Zurflu. You're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess item number seven wasn't actually an actionable item. Item number eight was.
So the agenda should have, or the council agenda should have reflected item eight, you're saying. But the report was correct.
Right, and I'm looking at the report, not the council agenda.
Okay.
But I just wanted to draw attention to that, and I'm fine with that, but just, I guess, so everyone's aware.
Do you need, I've got to hear. There's that in the agenda.
And I guess the council agenda doesn't have an eight, so.
Okay. All right. So as long as everybody's on the same page with that, I'm just going to seek the attorney's opinion. Is that acceptable to? Okay, all right. So everybody's understanding that it's item seven on the council agenda. It's actually item eight that's on the committee agenda. What the clerk does is takes the agenda as it's printed and published and puts that into our council agenda. So there was a, because of the addition of the item eight as a number eight, it didn't make it to the council agenda. Does that make sense? So generally, the minutes would have, I would assume, would be under item seven. It wouldn't be numbered as an item eight, I believe. Item eight on the agenda, on the actual minutes, yeah, okay. Everybody's understood in that? Did you?
Yes, Your Honor, there is an item number eight on the agenda.
On the minutes.
On the minutes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There's not on the agenda.
Correct.
You're right.
So that should have just been, eight should have been struck from the preparation of the minutes. But we're all understood that we're talking about the same item here. Okay. Alderperson, did you have anything further? Alderperson Blazer, you're next. Okay, very good. Any other questions on that? Everybody's on the same page? Okay. We have a motion to approve the tentative agreement contingent upon union ratification on or before April 30th, 2019. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Item 20D, the Legislative Committee meeting held on April 3rd, 2019. Alderperson Coth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Legislative Committee meeting was held at 5:00 PM Wednesday, April 3rd, in the second floor, conference room of City Hall. Alderpersons Coth and Zurflu are present. Alderperson Raum was excused. The list of others attending can be on, is on file with the clerk's office. Item number one, the meeting was called to order by Alderperson Coth at 5:03 PM. Item number two, motion by Zurflu, seconded by Coth to nominate Coth as chairperson. Nominations will be closed, and Coth was elected chairperson of the committee. Motion carried 2-0. Item number three, consider approval to amend or repeal the following ordinances so they're consistent with the new Chapter 11 zoning code. 2.09, 6.26, Chapter 10, 24.08, Chapter 28, and Chapter 38. See proposed ordinance. Adam Tagg and discuss these ordinances. Motion by Coth, seconded by Zurflu to approve the ordinances as presented. Motion carried 2-0. Item number four was initial discussion regarding a proposed ordinance to address bullying. Motion by Zurflu, seconded by Coth to direct the city attorney to prepare an anti-bullying ordinance consisted, consistent with the pullover ordinance, with the first citation being a total forfeiture of $313. Motion carried 2-0. Secretary's note, this ordinance will be considered at the May council meeting. Item number five was adjournment. Motion by Zurflu, seconded by Coth to adjourn. Motion carried 2-0. The meeting adjourned at 5:20 PM. With that, I move for adoption of the Legislative Committee minutes.
Motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Katna. Any requests to speak? Please cast your ballots. Motion is to approve.
Motion carried. Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Item 21, reports of other committees, commissions, and boards, departmental reports. Item A, the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority, held on December 26th. Item B, the McMillan Memorial Library, held on February 20th. Item C, the Mayor's Youth Council, held on February 6, 13, 27, and March 13th. Item D, the Park and Rec Commission meeting, held on March 18th. Item E, the Southwood County Airport Commission, held on March 7th, April 3rd, and April 11th. Item F, the Police and Fire Commission, held on March 13th and April 10th. Item G, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Summary for March. Item H, the Joint Review Board, held on April 1st. And item I, the Wastewater Treatment Commission, held on April 3rd. Alderperson, what are your wishes regarding those items?
I'll make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
Motion by Coth, second by Zurflu. Are there any requests to speak? See no requests to speak. Motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
Item 22, referral of communications to committees. There isn't anything listed. Are there requests to speak? Alderperson Coth, you're first.
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to make a referral to Committee of the Whole for, for a review for participation in allowing businesses to participate in the Downtown ONTAPs June 21st.
There's a special events application that's going to be taken up on that at our next finance meeting. At the next finance meeting, so I'm not sure.
If we're going to address it at the Property and Finance Committee meeting, then I will withdraw that request for Committee of the Whole.
Alderperson Zurflu?
Thank you, Your Honor. I brought this up a few meetings ago. The, if I could make a referral to the Finance Property Committee. And Ms. Schill, if you can, I guess, let me know if this sounds appropriate to you. But there's been quite the contention among some business owners about that alley that allegedly existed. Kind of behind where Book World came down. I want to make sure the referral is appropriate. I don't know if I can just maybe ask the chairperson of that committee to have an item where perhaps city staff can just explain, you know, if there- you know, if there ever was a actual city-owned alley there or not. They did apparently refer to August of two thousand eight as being the exact, um, meeting where some type of action might have been taken on this. It's before my time on council, at least. So if, whatever appropriate referral I can make, just to maybe have some of those concerns of theirs addressed, I would appreciate.
And if, if not at a committee discussion, at a minimum, maybe a correspondence to the entire council. I think if you, not only just you, but others probably have received some, some comment from folks that are involved there, perhaps.
Yes, thank you.
Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
Um, to the Legislative Committee for, uh, to discuss the non-voting members of the Water Works and Lighting Commission, so we can end this yearly battle that we have regarding that.
There would be, yeah.
It's a charter ordinance, probably, too, isn't it? I think it's in the charter.
You mean to change the membership of the Water Works Lighting Commission?
Or, or, yeah, to address.
I think we looked at that at one point and had decided that anything regarding Water Works and Lighting would not require a charter ordinance, but I can confirm that.
And I think that happened when we imposed term limits not too long ago, too.
That's correct.
Uh, there would be a member, I believe, coming up in the fall, if memory serves me correct, so.
Sounds good. And then the only other item I had was, I, I don't know if anyone else is having issues, and I, I don't want to go back to paper copy, but it is miserable trying to keep up with the council agenda using Google Docs and then having one PDF open of the agenda and, and trying to find and keep up with the reports. Or at least, unless I'm missing something here and somebody wants to train me, but, um, it's been a challenge.
And I don't want to speak for the clerk, but I thought, um, IT was going to look at the tabbing in PDFs. So you can actually use a PDF with tabs, so you can go back and forth between the sections.
That would be very helpful, thank you.
Alderperson Graff, you're next.
Um, I would actually like to have a referral to the Committee of the Whole to discuss, um, a policy around, or have an open discussion around, um, a special April council meeting prior to the induction of new council members. Not that I want to see it, it shouldn't be open for debate. It's either this is the way we operate, or this is the way we not operate. In the past, I can only speak for myself. It was an issue when I felt like the council was trying to sneak something in and close out business prior to me coming on council. So I would like to have this discussion with the other alder, or the other alderpersons to get our head around how, if, if it gets kicked to the Legislative Committee after the Committee of the Whole. But I think there should be a open discussion around that. Um, for the second month in a row, I'd like an update to the Public Works Committee about the fire stations and the women accommodations. And now it came to my attention that the Public Works Building, um, don't have, uh, accommodations for women, women's, um, bathroom facilities and shower rooms and such. So I would like to report at the next Public Works Committee to discuss accommodating women in the workforce. And my last referral is to the Finance and Property. I would like to see a policy reflect negligent, negligence on the point of not repairing property and waiting until, um, it's to such a point that we have to replace it. I see, and I'm hearing reports of certain aspects of city property not getting fixed and hopes of removal and new construction, so I would like to address that as well.
Alderperson Kubitschak, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a real quick piggyback on what Mr. Blazer was talking about for the agendas. If we could get it down, the board packet down to fifteen pages, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
I mean, you're, seriously. I have a referral for the Legislative Committee, and it's just a resolution of support for some of the league priorities as it relates to, um, upcoming legislative issues with the state legislature and, and budget issues. So one being on levy limits, one being on transportation. I think there's three resolutions, so we could take them up all at once, or we could take them up individually. So we may not want to bring them all to council at the same time, just based upon budget priorities and how the debate is going in Madison. So we'll get those to you, or to that committee chair for consideration. Alderperson Coth?
Yes, Your Honor, during referrals to communications to committees, if anyone in the audience wished to make a referral to a committee, or do we do that or no?
Direct referrals, no. So no direct referrals, you're saying?
Okay, not a problem. Um, for those wishing, dressy, a body, uh, for referral, do that through your alderperson, and they'll get that to the committee or commission.
Item, does that conclude the list? Item twenty-three on our agenda is beverage operator license appeal. Uh, item A, in open session, the council may vote to go into closed session under Section one nine point eight-five, Para one, Para B of the Wisconsin Statutes, which reads, in part, considering dismissal, demotion, licensing, or discipline of any public employee or person licensed by a board or commission and the taking of formal action on such matter, provided that the person licensed is given actual notice of an evidentiary hearing, which may be held prior um, to final action being taken and of any meeting at which final action may be taken. Notice shall contain a statement that the person has the right to demand that the evidentiary hearing or meeting shall be held in open session. The paragraph and paragraph F do not apply, uh, to such evidentiary hearing or meeting where the employee or person licensed, um, requests that an open session be held. Uh, in closed session, the council will hold any requested hearings by applicants for beverage operator licenses. Does any aspect of that have to open, occur in open session? Based upon that, or we just entertain a motion to go into closed? I'd entertain a motion to go into closed.
So moved.
I have a motion by Zerflu and second by Kubitschak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I guess if you could maybe hit your, um, buttons for the sake of the record, sorry. I probably shouldn't have done a voice vote on that. So if we could ask any, um, anybody in the room to, uh, to leave the room.